Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for July 16, 2024. My name is Carrie Martnek, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I need to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the planning board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberation of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northboro Remote Meetings on YouTube. We have the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public's access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. There will be no presentations to cover, no ground rules to cover, public comment to cover. There is an executive session. The chair will announce that the board will enter an executive session to discuss and will return from executive session only to adjourn. Following roll call vote, the webinar meeting will be ended. All board members will then leave the webinar meeting and enter the Zoom meeting. So with that, tonight we do have an executive session as mentioned. This executive session is pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation regarding potential land use litigation, the Gutierrez Company versus Northboro Planning Board, Land Court Number 21, MISC 000380, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. So with that, is there a motion for the board based on those reasons to move into executive session?
Slurred.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Amy? Oh, I thought I already said it.
Sorry, didn't hear. Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. So with that, we'll be moving over to executive session. So the public is aware, there are no public hearings this evening. We will be returning to cover old business as posted in the agenda, which includes primarily minutes. However, there will not be any hearings this evening. So with that, planning board, why don't we exit over to executive session and we will return.
Okay, we'll just give a few minutes. We have Millie coming on over. Next on the planning board agenda for old business, we have minutes for approval. So I'm just gonna get myself situated for that. Okay, so we have the minutes from May 21st. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes for May 21st? Are there any amendments to the minutes for May 21st? Okay, motion to approve the minutes as submitted for May 21st?
No move.
Second. Second. All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Really?
Aye.
There is an aye. Then we have the June 4th meeting minutes. Are there any amendments to the June 4th meeting minutes? Okay, motion to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes from June 4th as submitted? So move. Second.
Second.
Oh, darn it, Bill, you almost had it. All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. So that should round out all of our minutes. Lori, you had something. You sent us a letter for MPIC. Is there anything you want? We don't officially have it on the agenda, but is there anything at a high level we could speak to on that? Or you need something on that? Or you does as an FYI? Oops, you're on mute there. We can't hear you.
The master plan implementation committee has spent the last couple of months going through all of the various goals and objectives in the 2020 master plan to see which ones have been implemented, which ones haven't been. And if they haven't been implemented, why haven't they been implemented? So what that kind of brought to the forefront is there are certain goals, well, particularly objectives that are in the master plan that have, I've tried to implement most recently the sewer extension to Route 9 that were not supported by the select board. So the thought of the MPIC as the implementation party is that it would be good to get the land use boards and the selectmen together to review some of these objectives to see if these are still priorities. Or maybe the priorities have changed and there's something that should be set aside. So that really is the major objective. Another thing that kind of came out from the downtown revitalization plan is that there doesn't seem to be clear consensus on certain issues related to the downtown, particularly having to do with housing development, like the quantity of housing development, you know, mixed use and what that should look like. So the thought was to get folks to sit down together. Not quite sure what shape that Not quite sure what shape that should take. Um, I did have a conversation with the town administrator. And he thought that it would be helpful to have a facilitator possibly from CMR PC to help facilitate the discussion. Um, but the, the whole point of the discussion was to see if there is some sort of consensus. Um, so one of the, the things that was talked about quite a bit is uh the recommendation to hire an economic development director. Um, and that person would work for me. And one other concerns that I have is that I already feel like I'm kind of getting mixed messages. So typically what happens is I use the master plan as my blueprint for action. But it doesn't seem like there really is a consensus for some of those uh objectives. So when you hire an economic development director, what you're generally telling um the world is that Northborough is open for business and that you want to see economic development. Um, that is the purpose of that position. So if there are certain types of economic development uh that you would like to see, but there are other types that you don't want to see, then it's really important for that individual to know upfront what their marching orders are because nobody wants to uh kind of be set up to fail, you know, they don't want to be marching forward in a certain direction, thinking that that's what the leadership wants. Only to find that whenever these uh projects come before leadership, they're going to be denied on a regular basis. So essentially, the whole point of this memo is uh let's sit down together. Let's have a conversation. Let's see if we can all get on the same page. Let's see if we can decide whether uh the time is right to hire an economic development director. And if so, what should that individual be charged with?
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Anyone have objections? Amy, do you have an objection?
I don't have an objection, but I had a comment. Um, when we were going through the master plan and I was on that committee, it was a vision to go forward, but there were so many surveys done and outreach to the residents. I think it would be great for people to go back and look through the surveys again, because I know there were discussions about outreach again and reaching out to people again. We did the master plan in like 2020 and I know the people even in 2020, we're like, we've been asked this 20 times, let's just do what the survey said before. Like, we've already told you what we want to do. Let's just do it. So I think it's kind of important to read the input that we got back in 2020 before we do this and outreach to people again, because I was getting that. I was even getting that from the businesses. I walked around and handed out flyers for the business meeting and they're like, you know, I've been on this street for 20 years and I've been asked this 10 times and nothing happened, so I'm not gonna come again. So I would like, you know, just to review what we already got for information before we reach out to the people again, because I think they're getting burnout on community meetings.
That's a great point. So is um, so I see this letter to Mitch. Is the, are you just asking us tonight to um lend our support to that kind of meeting, Lori? Well?
Yeah, so this is actually gonna be a topic on the August 12th uh selectman meeting.
Okay.
So the, the meeting last night went to 1:00 AM. Um, so even though this letter was in their packet, there was absolutely no discussion about it whatsoever.
Okay.
Um, so it'll be brought up for the first time on August 12th. So I think it would be helpful. Um, of course, you're welcome to attend that meeting uh to lend your, your own uh comments to the discussion. Um, but it would be helpful for me. I, I, of course, I'm gonna go. Uh, Rick Leaf, who's the chair of the MPIC is going to go. Um, so it would be helpful for me to, to know what your thoughts are so that I can um provide those thoughts to the selectmen. And I would anticipate that this will be scheduled for some time in the fall. So it's just gonna be broaching the topic at the selectman meeting, but there um it would be for a, a meeting to take place in the fall.
Okay. Is everyone in support of that? Billy, you have a question?
Yeah, so Lori, I don't think I have your email. I don't have a memo from you at all.
Okay.
Um, but um what my question would be is, I think what you said makes act, makes absolute sense, right? Um, especially if they want to hire an economic development. Um, my wife actually does that and um she's been saying for a long time that um, that's sort of what the town needs. What my question to you is, is do you see this meeting as being the planning board, the ZBA and the selectman meeting to make sure we're all on the same page without any public input? Um, which I think is, is really what's needed, right? In, in my mind, that's what's needed. We need to come together
Yeah.
as the boards of the town first before we present anything that's public. Because if we're not on the same page, then exactly what Amy was saying is what happens, right? You get these multiple groups, each group going out and talking to businesses do, you know, from their own point of view.
Yeah, I mean, originally when I was envisioning it, I wanted it to be those three entities. So I wanted the ZBA, I wanted the planning board, and I wanted the select board. And the reason being is that you folks are the ones that are really um making development happen or not happen. And um, the select board is the one that I'm consistently going to for letters of support for grant applications. And some of these economic development recommendations are applying for grant applications. So um if they're not in support of the activity, they're not in support of the grant application, so I'm kind of spinning my wheels here.
Yeah.
Um, so ultimately, at the discussion uh with the MPIC, uh I think it was Amy. You, you might have brought up that you didn't think it was appropriate to have the ZBA part of that discussion. Um, I still think that they should be part of that discussion because they are approving a huge percentage of the development. So they're issuing the special permits and site plan approval for projects um that.
It's not like we're taking a vote. I, I mean, do you have a specific reasoning that you?
Yeah, I know it's not the jurisdiction. And Rick Leaf agreed. It had to do with the master plan in that, you know, the planning board is the one who writes the bylaws and comes up with the bylaws and the ZBA is the one who approves them or denies them. Like, it went back to that whole discussion. And we had that discussion last year with the ZBA where they said, you know, you guys come up with what we're gonna do and we're like the policing board. We follow the rules that the, like, the planning board and the select board are elected to represent the residents. And it was a big discussion. I wasn't even there. But um, I think Rick Leaf even agreed that we've had this discussion over and over and, and even I think the ZBA said, well, that's not under our purview. It came under, well, whose purview certain things were under. And this was talking about changing bylaws.
No, and I agree with the changing bylaws. I think though that they also have a say in what businesses come into town, right? Especially with things in Kerry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say these two words that you don't like, but use variances, right? And to make sure that we are all on the same page, right? Um, I think it can't hurt to, to invite them. If they don't want to go, that's fine. Uh, but I think, you know, we all need to come together here. You know, if we need to make this a kumbaya moment and sit by the campfire and bring out guitars, then, you know, that's what we need to do. But, you know, that needs to happen before, before this town can move forward on anything.
And that's fine. It was just brought up to me and it was talked about, you know, the different purviews of the different boards.
Yeah.
And so that's why I brought it up. And Rick Leaf actually having been on the planning board was in agreement.
Well, I guess in terms of our own involvement, I mean, it, ultimately, it's a the board of selectmen is creating the meeting, I assume. So in, in our, in terms of our own involvement, it sounds like this board is in favor of this kind of meeting and would like to be a part of it. Yes, Anthony, Millie?
Yep, I have no issue.
Truthfully, it probably should fall into the planning board. Like, the planning board purview is the master plan and zoning. And if you look at other towns, it's planning and community development. Like, it really should be falling under the planning board. Like, it really isn't. The only thing that the select board really has to do with it is they're approving like funding for grants, you know, they're approving funding.
Yeah, well, who knows with implementation? So where, where our purview is the plan, but the key has always been, or the trick has always been, uh, not trick in a bad way, but the twist, I guess, is that implementation is not the planning board. So implementation is, whose is the implementation? Because what I don't want is for the planning board to suddenly be in charge of the implementation matrix because we haven't really ever been in charge of it. So Lori, who is in charge of the implementation matrix?
So um, in the master plan, uh, there are various objectives that are assigned to various boards and committees.
Yeah.
Um, so what we did to update the implementation matrix is we went out to the various departments mostly and in some cases uh the boards and committees and we asked uh for them to update the items that are specifically designated to their board and committee. So um, an example is Millie. Of course, she was representing the historic district commission. So she went into the matrix. So we made it available. So everybody on the master plan implementation committee as well as department heads could directly write in um what they had done in the ma- matrix. Uh, so Millie did that. And um, so the matrix that I sent to you in the email and Bill, I think I sent it out to you uh yesterday.
I just forwarded it to Bill.
Yeah.
I went to Kerry's. I just forwarded it to him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that, that is the combination of everybody's comments together. So you'll see that there are some initials. So you'll see MM, that's Millie. And then you'll see LC, that's me. Um, Amy also contributed to the matrix. So you'll see AP. Um, so then there are probably some um initials that you won't recognize. But that is kind of, so it's the master plan implementation committee is charged with ensuring that all of the departments and the boards and the committees are aware of what they're supposed to do. And then they're the ones who are following up to say, hey, you know, I noticed that you didn't do anything here. Why not?
Okay.
Um, so that is their charge.
Okay, so regardless of who initiates the meeting, I guess you sent a memo to Mitch to say um you want them to discuss it at a future meeting, to talk about having a joint meeting. So for tonight's purposes, do you just need to know we're on board with that meeting, the logistics, whatever they are, come up May, but we're on board?
Yes. That's all I need to know from you.
Okay, so everybody's thumbs up on that meeting and then we'll figure out the logistics, but it sounds like um, it's, I think it's, it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Amy, do you have something?
Yeah, what other towns do and what our town is looking to do, it sounds like too, is that every section, like Lori was saying, like the planning board has their own section. And the other towns, what they do is that MPIC actually meets once a year. And like the planning board reference would go and say, we met this goal A, B, and C. And Millie from historical would say, okay, we met A, B, and C. Like, so uh, you probably understood what Lori said, but it's, we all have our own section. Like, nobody's in charge of anyone else. Like, open space is their own section.
Yeah. Okay, thanks for clarifying. Okay, so other than that, um, I guess our next planning board meeting is August 20th. Um, the agenda had said August 6th, but that um was a miss, it was a typo. So August 20th and then September 3rd. Next ZBA is July 23rd. And speaking of MPIC, that's coming up this week. So if there's no further business before the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I just have one quick question.
Before um we, before we go until August 20th, Lori, have you heard anything back from the state, from the MBTA?
No, so um, so all of the information was submitted to um the attorney general's office. So that's half of the approval for the MBTA. And I'm still gathering and I will admit of the last three weeks, I spent two weeks on vacation.
Thank you.
So I just haven't been here. So I started compiling the information for the state's middle. Um, but I haven't completed that yet. So that's uh one of my top priorities for this week. So I'm hoping to have that out to, out the door within the next week. I did get a, a bunch of information from the town clerk's office that I needed. So um, it's just a matter of putting the finishing touches on this middle and sending it off.
Awesome. Great. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. Have a good rest of July, everyone. Thanks.
See you in a month. Good one.
Okay, bye.